Good afternoon. I'd like to welcome you to our October 19th work session 2021. Members present in the boardroom, we have members Donley, Higgins, Jacobs, Lessons, and Wilson, along with myself, Bellamy. We also have the superintendent present, along with our several staff, as well as our recording secretary, Katie Grant. So, right now, I'd like to visit our RFIs. Oh, I didn't turn on. The RFIs are items or questions which board members have asked for more information on. And these items are prioritized by the board as a group, and may or may not be discussed or forwarded to the administration for response. So we are going to take a look at our list. I don't think it's pretty too long. Okay, so we have member Lessons question. Could the administration please prepare and consider making publicly available a comparison of student attendance records to date by school from the 2019-20 school year with those from the 21-22 school year? And then she gives a suggestion on what that might look like. And then I requested that we discuss and direct at the next, well, per board member Bellamy, the request will be discussed and direction provided to the administration during the next boardwork session. So that is where we are with this request. Member Lessons, did you want to make any other clarifications on your request? Or have you gotten anything that makes you not need this request?
You know, thank you. It feels a little bit like a moot point at this point. The Assembly has taken action, which I assume ASD falls under. Although we have our own Smart Start Plan, the municipal ordinance, I suppose, supersedes that of ASDs. My hope, when I created this request for information, was that the public would be more aware of a significant attendance issue, which is evident if you go to the, you can go to the data dashboard right now. And it's profound. I remain surprised that just looking at the numbers between this year and a prior fall, a prior normal fall, would take two to five days for three team members because I think that the data is there and it just requires an Excel, I don't know, just typing it up. But it kind of feels moot at this point.
Okay. So with that, there's no...
Madam President, if you would like, in the Board Connect, I can put a report. I think there was a question as to the veracity of staff's time. And when I do present it back to them, I do ask them, how much would it take? And so I will have a report on that, since that was questioned this evening. Thank you.
And the other thing is, it's in addition to what everybody is already doing. So if it is possible to do a Board Connect, that would be great.
Yes, I'll find out why. I don't know. But I did present it to team members who would actually have to do that work, and that's what they responded.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, member Lessons. Thank you, Dr. Bishop. Is that, that is the only one that we have? So now we bring our attention.
Madam President, I did have a question. I didn't, I wasn't able to submit the request first, but knowing that we might not get to it for a couple of weeks, I guess I was hoping to ask a question, then maybe verbally submit a request that I can follow up via email. So I had a question come up regarding eligibility for sports. And I want to make sure my understanding is correct, that the GPA requirement laid out in the handbook, the ASD handbook, is, the 2.0 specifically, is an ASD requirement and not a state commission level requirement?
Member Jacobs, I could just request our athletic specialty person to come forward. I think we could ask her that pretty quickly. So the question, Dr. Johnson, is about the 2.0 standard for participation in eligibility in sports. And thank you.
It's been a while since I've been up here. I had to figure out the microphone again. So through the President, member Jacobs, the 2.0 GPA requirement is actually, it's established by ASA, the governing body of our high school athletics that's run at a state level. As districts, we can always increase or, we can always increase that requirement, but we can't go lower than that requirement for our athletes to stay eligible. Does that answer your question?
It does. Could I follow up? So the governing body of ASA makes that decision. Do we have any input or direct feedback loop into how ASA makes its decision in regards to requirements for our student athletes?
Yes, through the President, to member Jacobs, yes, we do. We have a region for representative. Right now, it's currently Principal Megan Hatswell from Chugiak High School. In December, there's going to be a transition that her term on the board is up. And so Eagle River High School Principal Tim Helby will fill those shoes moving forward for a three-year term. We also have kind of indirect influence. I talk to Billy Strickland, the executive director, on a regular basis, as does many people in my office around athletics. So we certainly have lots of influence there.
Thank you, Madam President. That's all my questions. I'll just follow the email. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Johnson. Member Jacobs, I also, I forgot that there is a ASA, I mean, not ASA, but a school board, Alaska School Board Association. We have a, there is a representative that meets with the ASA group. So school boards can generate and ask questions through that source as well. And I'll bring you that information. Okay, so we're going to continue with our agenda with the other item. And that is our bond discussion. So I will turn it over to Dr. Bishop and staff.
Thank you, Madam President. At this time, I would like to turn it over to Tom Roth, our Chief Operating Officer, to share the six-year CIP, as well as the bond proposition. And as a reminder, this ASD has entered into, two years ago, a two-year rotation on our requests for city bonds. And so we did not have one last year. And this is the proposed, our recommendation to go to the Assembly. Thank you.
Thank Dr. Bishop, through the Board President. So if I might first, just orient board members, you should have three products in front of you. One is the slide packet that we're about to go through. You should also have an 11-by-17 spreadsheet. And that is the proposed six-year capital improvement plan from 2022 through 2027. And then lastly, you have what we call Table Two, which is a listing of the projects, some details on the projects that are on the six-year plan. So I just would like to very quickly introduce some of the participants who are present here outside the norm. So I've got three individuals prepared to respond to specific questions, if we have those during the meeting. So the first is Mr. Larry Morris, who is our supervisor for planning and design in CPNC. And he can answer questions that are specific to most of the projects on the list. You can actually talk to all of them. I also have Mr. Charlie Peters, who is a project manager for the Inlet View Elementary Replacement Project, and Mr. Paul Barrell, who is the architect for that project from Envision. That if time permitting, we get to the opportunity that those gentlemen are here, prepared to respond to any questions that members may have. I recognize that that has been a topic of interest recently. Next slide, please, Kathy. So again, the purpose here is to provide information. It is to introduce the proposed 2022 capital, or correction, the 2022 bond proposition to the board, and the 2022 through 27 six-year capital improvement plan. I want to acknowledge that we met with each member of the board, with the exception of member Holloman. So the information that I'm going to present to you today is the same information discussed individually, that I'm intending to move through this pretty quick. I recognize that we have about 45 minutes. And I want to ensure that we have time to answer questions. I'll pause periodically. And if there are questions, please, by all means, just get our attention, and we'll certainly pause. So you can see the agenda. Again, I'm going to focus on the bond first. There's some information that we'll go through that are specific to bond debt. And then we'll transition into the six-year capital improvement plan. So next slide, please. Next slide. So again, just to recap, this 2022 bond proposition, as Dr. Bishop mentioned, this is a two-year bond that the district, the administration is proposing to the board. It is focused primarily on deferred maintenance and safety and security. And we'll go through those projects here momentarily. The proposed total cost estimate for this two-year bond package is just shy of $96 million. So if you factor that over a two-year period, it's roughly $48 million per year, which is a little bit below the annual average that the district has bonded for over time. And there are reasons for that. During the same period, we are looking to, we're anticipating retiring over $102 million. So the bond proposition amount is actually below what the district will retire in the same timeframe. That, again, the deferred maintenance focus, you'll see in the proposal that there are multiple roof replacement projects. There are also two roof restoration projects on the bond proposition. We have a continuation of the security vestibule project that the board has been supportive of in previous bond propositions. Again, that is to improve the security posture in our elementary schools. And then lastly, we do have a partial building life extension program, building life extension project for Lake Otis Elementary, as well as some safety and other improvements in East High School. And then finally, that we do have some amount dedicated to planning and design. Again, this is our ability to properly anticipate and plan for projected costs on the 2024 bond proposition. It's our best estimate of what we anticipate bringing forward to the board in two years. So if you would, thanks, Kathy. Next slide. So again, this slide represents the projects that the administration is proposing to the school board for approval to move forward to the Assembly. So my intent, again, to get through this quickly, is not to go into details so much as just to highlight certain specific points about these projects. Again, the amount projected is just below $96 million with the retirement over the same timeframe of about $102.3 million. So the first is East High School safety improvements in the academic area. As mentioned previously, because of the size and cost of high school renovations, we, as a matter of practice, generally break these out over time. And we have been doing work in East. And this represents a continuation of renovation work, increased seismic improvements within the building, and some ADA. The next, the next five projects are all elementary school roof replacements. As we brief to board members, these schools have what we call the Irma Roof, the inverted roof membrane system that the district has been replacing over time to install what is called an EPDM roof, which performs better in this environment and is also equally significant. It's generally a restorable roof, once you get to its design, the end of its design life. We have a boiler replacement project for Birchwood. You'll see a continuation of roof repairs to eight prototype elementary schools. We have the security vestibule project, our security improvement projects in 12 of our elementary schools. In addition, we have five schools that we are proposing to the board that we replace what are existing analog surveillance camera systems with digital systems that are resident in all other district schools. As mentioned, we are proposing two roof restorations. One is the maintenance building down in the LeVar complex. The other is Ursa Minor Elementary. Again, these are EPDM roofs that have been determined to be restorable. I mentioned the Lake Otis Elementary Building Life Extension Program. Again, some significant work to extend the life of that building. The Chugiak High School roof project, again, this one was brought forward. It was actually on the planned 2024 bond. But with one large project that was moved to 2024, we brought this project forward. And then finally, the planning and design for projected 2024 projects, about $2.6 million. I will pause, Madam President, to answer any questions that board members may have on these projects.
Questions so far? Not seeing any?
May I just interject? I guess for a matter of the public record, then at this point, the public would be aware that Inlet View is not a part of the 2022 bond.
Through the President, to member Lessons, yes. This is now a public record, that members of the public are able to view this. And, you know, some will recognize that fact.
Okay. Continue, Mr. Roth.
Thank you, ma'am. So Kathy, if you can move, keep going. Again, these are just project details that are in your table, too. Keep going, one more, please, and one more. So I just wanted to bring back this specific slide. And this will also kind of come out when we talk about the six-year plan. So the district, over time, in the last 10 to 11 years, has been paying down its outstanding bond debt. At the same time as the district has been paying down bond debt, that the amount of deferred backlog, major maintenance in the district has increased significantly. And right now, the difference between these figures, again, these are numbers, but it's not insignificant that we are paying down a lot more than we are bonding for, and that buying power is diminishing over time, that we have a $320-some-odd-million gap between what is outstanding bond debt and what is our current backlog of deferred maintenance. And Madam President, I'll pause. And I've got Mr. Anderson, if there are any questions or comments that are specific to bond debt. Can you go to the next slide, Kathy? So this next slide, again, represents the amounts that the district has bonded for from 2011 to the present. And just to highlight a couple of points here, that you can see, generally speaking, that the amount that the district has bonded for has ranged between just shy of $60 million down to right around $50. That in 2020, again, we had a two-year bond that was for $82.833 million. And then this year, the district is proposing an amount just shy of $96 million. That the amounts that the district has bonded, again, it just reiterates what we spoke to, that the amount that we've bonded over the last 10 years is significantly less by about $120 million from what we have paid off. So Jim, do you want to talk real quick in terms of your study of current buying power, what bonds are buying compared to 10 years ago?
Sure, I'll be happy to. If, you know, when we look at intentionally ensuring that we stay, that we pay off more than what we're spending, the one piece that gets lost over time is the buying power. So if you go to the Bureau of Labor and Statistics Census Bureau websites and use their calculators, a $50 million bond 10 years ago would require $63 million to have the same buying power today. So though we've kept our new bonds about the same cost in order to make sure that we're paying off more than we add to debt, what we're doing is, every year, we're actually reducing our buying power or capacity with the bonds that we do put out there. So at some point, we've since passed that divergent gap that you saw on the previous slide, where our deferred maintenance is continuing to get higher, where our total bond debt continues to get lower. At some point in the future, after the state recovers, there will have to be some reversal of that path, that glide path, if we're ever going to keep up with our facilities long term.
So Kathy, can you go to the next slide, please? So if I might just very briefly transition to where we are in the timeline. So here we are, 19 October. Instead of Dr. Bishop's update, that we modified that. But this is, again, the first introduction to the board during the work session, that at the next meeting on 1 November, the district will have provided to the board a board memorandum for non-action with the intent that we would bring it to the board on the 16th for action. Once that happens, there are a couple of things that occur once the board has approved. So first, that we forward it to bond council. And bond council will review and really provide the guiding language to the district on how monies can be spent if approved by the public. Also, the board does have a joint meeting with the Assembly. Generally speaking, at this board meeting, the bond is the primary topic of discussion, just for your information there. So when, just to backtrack, when the board acts, it's going to be both for the bond proposition as well as the six-year capital improvement plan. So we also, once it comes back from bond council, we will submit to the municipal clerk, and she will place our bond proposition on the Assembly calendar. So what's significant in order for the bond proposition, if it is approved by the board, that the Assembly must act on it and approve it by the second meeting in January for it to make the April ballot. So we kind of like to get it to them a bit earlier, that we would want them to at least have their first read on the, their second meeting in December, that they could act on it potentially in their first meeting in January, which is the 11th. If for whatever reason, they choose not to act and have some information requirements, that we would come back on the 25th. And that would, in theory, be our last opportunity for the Assembly to act and for the bond proposition to make it to the April ballot. I'll pause if anybody has any questions.
Not seeing any questions.
So at this time, again, and we can always come back. I'd like to transition to the six-year capital improvement plan. So again, in front of you, you have an 11-by-17. What I'll do is, I will reference this product. But what I'd like to do, instead of going down the list of every year, every project, and I'll come back to it. But I'd like to highlight, what are the differences from the six-year plan that the board approved last year? Just kind of highlight those. And I think that will illustrate, you know, some of the significant points on this six-year plan. Before I do that, though, I do want to do a very quick discussion. And it ties back to what Jim Anderson talked to and some of the comments I made about bonding amount and bond debt retirement. As mentioned, for this bond, this bond that we are retiring, we're retiring an amount that is higher than what the district is bonding for. But starting in 2024, you'll see what is a pretty significant decline in the number and the amount that the district is retiring in bond debt. So if you were looking at the chart, you come down four rows from the top. You'll see a row, anticipated debt retirement. So in 2024, year three, that it's down to about $43.4 million. From the previous year, about $52. And '25, it goes from $43 to $35.5 million, and it continues down in year five to $26.8 million, and then $27.9 in 2027. So that kind of showcases what will be a challenge potentially for the district, for us to continue to try to meet an amount in our bond proposition that is below or matching debt retirement. It doesn't really support what the district needs to do to take care of the public's property. So I mean, it's not something that we need to wrestle with at this point, but I just wanted to highlight to board members that it is a future matter that will come forward. So if I might just very briefly highlight, what are the key differences in this six-year plan from the plan approved last year? So first, probably the most, the two most significant is that, one, we have moved the Inlet View Elementary School Construction Project from year one, 2022, to year three, 2024, that we have removed Abbott Loop Elementary School from a design that was last year proposed in 2022 and construction in 2024, that we have removed those projects. That we have moved Wonder Park Elementary School, the design from 2022 to 2024, and that this is not a renovation, that now it is a replacement, and that the replacement would be proposed from 2024 to 2026. We have added Tudor Elementary School for a replacement design in 2026, that we have changed the East High School project, what was originally in 2021, an academic area safety and pool safety project. We have reduced the scope and deferred the pool safety to a later date, that that reduced the cost from $13.4 to $6.1 million. And then lastly, we have brought forward, again, because of the movement of Inlet View Elementary Construction to 2024, to have an amount that is fairly commensurate to what's being retired, that we brought the Chugiak High School roof replacement from '24 to '22, that we brought forward the maintenance and Ursa Minor roof restoration projects, again, from '24 to '22. And then we added some number of elementary schools to the security vestibule projects, as well as the analog surveillance camera replacement recommendations. So that is a summary of the changes from last year to this year. So bond year, or correction, year one in the CIP, as you see, that is what we are proposing on 2022 bond. And then we would take a pause in 2023. And then the next bond year would be in 2024. And again, that one, right now, we are templating for the Inlet View replacement construction, as well as the Wonder Park design, and then a continuation of deferred maintenance. Madam President, I will pause at this time. And we're happy to answer any questions on anything that are, any questions related to the bond, as well as the six-year plan.
Okay, member Jacobs, I see your hand.
Thank you, Madam President. So to our team, by pushing the Inlet View Elementary School project from '22 to '24 and delaying the construction, are there elements of the development process that are going to have to be repeated, or monetary resources that will have to re-expend?
So to the board president, Member Jacobs. The design itself, we're at 65% now. I don't anticipate that we would add cost other than inflation for the two years that the project would be delayed. But I'm going to defer to Mr. Fenicev to respond in more detail.
Through the president?
Yes.
The, as Mr. Roth said, it's really not a huge impact, except for the inflation. The design will still be good. And it will actually give the designer and the construction manager the opportunity to further refine the design over time.
May I follow up?
Yes.
Thank you. So it's fair to say that through at least inflation, there will be some additional costs. We just don't know what that will be.
Through the president, we would anticipate, yes, that there would be inflation costs. It's, what makes it hard to speculate on costs? I mean, you really don't know what the cost is until you get an accepted bid. So we're just, again, it's speculation. We have, you know, we believe, and it probably is consistent with what's going on in the global economy, that the cost of materials continue to rise, that labor is probably going to continue to become more costly, that it probably will be more expensive.
And then, Madam President, one more follow-up. Again, I just wanted to get that on the record, I guess, just viewing through the lens that while those costs may go up, our bond amounts aren't necessarily following that same trend. Though the other question I had is, I attended a community listening session regarding the Inlet View Elementary School in particular. And the topic that came up was a major remodel versus what's currently being proposed. What was the figure, my understanding is the ASD team came up with what that would look like financially? What was that cost amount compared to the new construction?
Go ahead.
So when we looked at the various options within Inlet View, we looked at a building life extension. We looked at an extended renewal and then a replacement. Building life extension tends to give you about 10 years of more useful life out of it. Intermediate renewal gives you about 20. And then when we look at replacing a building, we typically get about 50 years out of it. So the cost, and I don't have the specific numbers in front of me, but I believe it was around $20 million for the extended renewal and about $10 million for the BLE.
Thank you.
I think I saw Member Higgins.
I appreciate the focus right now on the deferred maintenance and the impact it's going to have on life extension and maintaining them after that. No problem there. I just wanted to, I know we got new board members here and the public in general, is that in the 1990s, when they came up with the base student allocation, they knew they were not funding for the maintenance of construction with schools. They knew that was a part of the cost that wasn't factored into the BSA. We always ask questions, how come you're not paying for it out of your operation cost? Well, there's a good reason. We've been provided that money to better operate the schools. And it was understood at that time that it would be bonded with the cost for the school construction and major renovation costs would be paid for out of bonds. And of course, the easy way when you get in trouble is shift the cost. And so the public's picking up the cost of bonds that in the past was shared or paid the majority at one point by the state in regards to it. So just when that issue comes up, I know it's an issue out there the public always has concerns about. How come you aren't maintaining the schools within the current budget amount? Because the state has never funded us the money necessary to be able to maintain the schools. And some of these costs, if you're in private business, would be viewed as a long-term investment, not just a routine maintenance or maintenance that you would only pay in operating expense. So I just want to emphasize that part so that because the public is sometimes always asking that question and it's a wrong question in line with this. I've had a discussion about this. The deferred maintenance cost is unacceptable at a high level. I know we're stuck with it. I would, only thing I would say is that I look at it and I say, okay, we're spending, we're paying off over 100 million and we're down to 95. If there was something else that within that amount to add it in there, I would do it, particularly if it had to do with anything from a safety standpoint or it's preventing damage to the building by another roof. Everything like that makes sense. I mean, it really does. Because we're not going to be able to maintain this forever, just based upon payoff anyway. And we're 6 million under or something like that. So I'm just one of those that whatever we can do to maximize it, that's really what I would recommend. So there's got a little play in here, let's take advantage of it, I think. But I know people are going to be disappointed on the schools, what we're doing right now, anything else. But our primary concern has got to be focused on keeping the schools functional, safe, and preventing damage. And that's what I'm really, so I just want to comment that I think it's, in today's time, where we're at, with the issues we have to face, the lack of support from the state for bonds and the issues locally to do it, I think this is one that we resonate well with the public, that we're doing everything we can to extend the lives rather than just replacing schools in this bond. So appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. So my question actually has to do with, and I almost don't want to ask it because I don't want to, I don't want, I'm not advocating for this. But last year, we, the board revised its policy to make sure that we look at boundaries. And we do that in conjunction with Census. And look at, you know, basically look at enrollment, whether our schools are full, whether, have we, do we see ourselves having to do any of that now or in the future? Could we, I mean, I think to not do that is in light of the whole picture of our needs is a missing piece for me.
Dr. Bishop, I think you're going to address that?
Thank you. I'll go ahead and start on this. And the answer is yes, we have begun an analysis as well. And this spring, we'll present to the school board some recommendations that would not take in effect next year, but out another year. Basically have a transition year. But again, those proposals would be worked through with the community groups, with the stakeholders at the places where they are, where they occur, both in changing bus routes or basically your homeschool draw, perhaps school closures, program adjustments, things like that. So we're engaged in just a comprehensive look now using data. And then we'll present it back to the board and the communities with a plan of engagement to understand, you know, what is needed to move our community forward and thinking about student success in our, you know, bottom line, if you will, to be able to get the best value to our parents and students and our employees.
But that analysis won't have anything to do with where we are right now?
No, ma'am, no. So the bond where we are is truly looking at the major maintenance, as Mr. Higgins suggested and is absolutely correct. The state, at the time that they created statute for the Funding Formula for Operations, also created a statute for funding capital. At this, that is something at the legislature that continues. These two were parallel, funding sources and formulas, but they were not interchanged. So.
Great. Thank you. I look forward to that. Other questions? Member Donley?
Thank you, Madam President. The new, the proposed six-year plan has a Wonder Park Elementary replacement. So, and that totals about $35,768,000. How much would a intermediate 20-year remodel cost for Wonder Park?
Through the president. So whenever we look at replacing a school, we also look at the, doing a building life extension, which is a short restoration repair to it. And then we also look at the expanded renewal. Typically, it's about 50% to 60% of the cost. The difference there is the amount of years in useful life you get out of it. But it doesn't address the backlog of deferred maintenance a lot of times, nor does it address the programmed deferred maintenance that's coming up on Wonder Park.
So my question was, how much would it be to do an intermediate remodel for Wonder Park, the 20-year life?
About $20 to $24 million.
Other questions? All right. Oh, are you still, I'm sorry.
The same question for the proposed Tudor Elementary replacement that's on the six-year plan. There's a design for $2,800,000, but that's for replacement. So what would be the cost of the total replacement? And what would be the cost of an intermediate 20-year project?
Typically, I don't have those exact numbers in front of me, but typically it follows the same formula. It's usually about 50% to 60% of the cost for an intermediate renewal. And then for building life extension, it's slightly less, 30% to 40%.
So that's my question again. What is the projected cost of the Tudor Elementary replacement design? So project, the actual construction for the replacement? And how much would the intermediate 20-year project be?
Would you like to run that calculation? And we can get that by the end of the meeting?
Yes, we can do that.
We could just do, I mean, we could take that number right now and times it by 0.6 and we'd have our number.
That's helpful, but the number isn't on the chart to do that with right now. There's just the design amount and not the cost for the construction. It does not appear on the chart. So giving me a percentage doesn't do me any good because I don't have a.
No, the gentleman will, Mr. Donley, they will get that for you.
We're working on it.
Thank you. Let's see, Dora has not asked the question yet.
I was just wondering if you can share why Abbott Loop was removed and Wonder Park was put in its place for replacement?
Through the president, to Member Wilson. So it somewhat ties into what the board president was asking about. So there is a purpose why Abbott Loop is not on the bond. That it could be part of a future discussion to address what is an excess capacity to enrollment.
You have a follow-up? Okay. All right. Kelly, are you good? Do you have a question?
Well, it's really maybe segueing into more of an Inlet View discussion. So I could hold off.
Okay. Is yours having to do with? Okay. All right. Member Higgins?
Just a real quick question. If I remember correctly, the Pikes Holdem study that looked at adequate funding for ASD, which shows, I think, I don't know what the number is today. It was up to 120 million, and I'm sure it's higher than that now of underfunded. That's primarily in place of classroom size, but it looked at administration. It didn't look at, I don't believe, at any of the capital project kind of issues because that varies by location. So is that accurate? Yeah. Thank you.
So if I might just make a very brief comment, Madam President, with regards to the six-year plan and, you know, this is something, it's a somewhat fluid document in that every year the board gets a chance to review and make decisions on what is in the six-year plan. You know, this time last year, COVID, COVID was on the fourth page of the news. It's obviously had an impact on enrollment. In our 2019 bond, we had just had a bond passed by the board in November of 2018. And then we had an earthquake, which radically adjusted. So I just say that because, you know, I recognize that there is messaging in the six-year capital improvement plan. But every year, the administration will come back with a recommendation that's often informed by the environment, that the board will have the opportunity to, once again, influence the plan.
Member Donley, I want to go to Miss Member Lessons, but she has not spoken yet. And then I'll come back to you.
Yeah, I would appreciate clarification on the vestibules. I know that I've had a chance to walk through under construction sites. Just to clarify, it's for, you guys are prioritizing elementary schools. What's the status of middle schools and high schools? Is that sort of the very long range or are they already there?
Through the president, and that's a great question. So after Parkland, I think most folks recall that event, that there was a very involved look by the district. In fact, it was a community effort to look at security. The security threats to elementary schools are significantly different than threats in middle and high schools. Generally, the threat in elementary school comes from the outside, trying to get in. So you can design systems in an elementary school because you have a single point of entry generally, that you can address that. Secondary schools are kind of different animals in that you have a non-standard building that's generally much larger. There are multiple entryways into these school buildings. And again, the threat is typically on the inside. It's a student, more likely than not, that is having difficulty. So it's a different problem. So I think once we get through this, I mean, there are probably a lot smarter people out there that have solved this. But, you know, the next real effort will be to understand how do you address this different risk that exists in secondary schools? I don't know that it's a, it doesn't, it won't look like what we are seeing in the elementary schools.
Yes.
So do any of our middle schools have secure vestibules or something approximating them right now?
Central is an example, where the, there is an inner vestibule that is secured that members of the public, if they want to visit the school, have to route into the administrative area. Likewise, at Chugiak High School, we did do a project at Chugiak last year that has the same effect. That's anybody coming into the school after the primary entry and exit hours has to go through the administrative office to gain access to the school.
All right. Member Donley?
Thank you. Mr. Roth, in response to the question about why Abbott Loop replacement wasn't on this proposal anymore, did your response relate at all to the fact that many of the schools in the immediate area around Abbott Loop have significantly low percentage occupancy?
Through the president, to Member Donley, yes.
Other questions? Did you have a follow-up, Mr. Donley? Okay. Okay. Okay, so the requests, there is one request for information for Mr. Donley. And if we will get that when you are ready to give it to us. And we will make sure that Mr. Donley. And we will make sure that Mr. Donley gets that. Okay. Seeing no more questions. Yes, you may proceed. We have a few questions on Inlet View.
Thank you so much. It has, Inlet View has certainly been, not in the news, but on our radar, our internal news, there's been South Edition Community Council meetings. I was invited by, I couldn't attend that, but I was able to watch it on Zoom and I was able to meet with a number of the, the neighbors of the school community and kind of do a place-based education seminar for me, just to sort of walk the neighborhood and really understand their concerns. And what was relayed was, was really their sense that they hadn't been participants in that design process. And I guess the question here is, to what extent, if we have a 65% design, if we're delaying this for two years, to what extent can we kind of go back a couple of steps to really genuinely incorporate community members' feedback in a way that maybe hasn't already been accommodated?
Through the President, that's a, that's a great question. So to, to be sure, the, the door is not closed by, by any, any stretch to, to the immediate neighbors of Inlet View Elementary. I'm, I'm a, you know, I guess a little bit dismayed that, you know, this being two years into it, that that seems to be the conversation that they've been excluded. I don't, I don't know that that's a fair sentiment, but I, I respect that, that the neighbors who live immediately adjacent to Inlet View feel that way. I, I think the, the Building Design Committee was actually very representative of people living in the area, parents, staff, the architect and the project manager. Again, my regrets that, that people who, who think that they would have wanted to participate were not afforded that opportunity. But I think those are the folks that, you know, hopefully moving forward, that, that we can have a conversation. There, there are some things about that, that specific plot, as, as everyone knows, Inlet View is pretty small by comparison, that you have a municipal easement that goes right down the middle, that you're either going to build on the north side of the easement or you're going to build on the south side. What's significant about Inlet View in, in the context of a replacement project, if you were to build on the north side, you're really kind of creating an environment where you're going to displace kids for three academic years because you have to demo the existing building and then you have to build a new one where students are going to be parceled out to other schools. The south design that's been proposed obviates that need, that students would remain in school, in their school during the construction process. And I think that's significant, and that probably was, was really what informed the recommendation because some of this discussion about drainage and soils and seismic stuff, I mean, it's, it's, it's a very small site, that the dirt to the north is the same as the dirt to the south. So, so those, those concerns, I, I think, again, and, and we have, we have data to present to those that have raised those concerns. So it really kind of comes down to a north or south location that both are suitable for a replacement school. But again, I, I understand, I'm, I'm a homeowner. I can, I can understand concerns that people would raise on this topic.
Could I say, Ms. Talman, did you want to welcome? Let the record show he has joined us. It's been here actually for quite a while. Other questions, comments? Go on, Kelly.
All right, well, a little follow up. A three-year, a three-year duration for displacing students, that, you know, I continue to say, oh, that's news to me. Relocatable buildings, there are some that are already on the site. What, what does putting a whole village of relocatable buildings on the south side during that duration, that three-year duration, if you were to build on the north? I mean, is, is there a cost that you have for that?
I, I don't, it's, cost, cost, through the President, cost is not the issue. I mean, I, I guess I would, you know, from a, from a, from a technical perspective, I, I don't know that the space, quite frankly, is large enough to accommodate a relocatable city to, to host that entire program. I mean, Tom, Tom and his team have done that analysis. But I think it's kind of the same thing, you're, you're putting students in relocatable buildings for a three-year period, and relocatable buildings, again, they're relocatable buildings. Right now, we frankly discourage use of relocatable buildings for, for education because the, the basic absence of ventilation in those buildings are just not optimal. So can it be done? I, I would imagine you, you could make it happen, we could make it happen. But would you want to?
Madam President, just to add to that, those other items that we have in high regard, such as student safety, staff safety, is compromised many times in relocatables, being able to watch over children, utilization of restroom facilities, utilization of lunchroom, multipurpose rooms, as well as PE. So when we do have, schools, I have run schools of relocatables in my previous job because the district was growing so fast, we couldn't build buildings enough. And it does put a pinch on the type of experience that we would want for students. It is a solution. I, I just don't necessarily think that the students who would experience it during that time would, would feel kind of loved, if you will, in, in that regard, or staff. It would be a tough situation.
I have trauma around relocatable classrooms as a principal. That's all I'm going to say, I have trauma. Whose hand did I see, did I see a hand down here? You guys good? Okay. All right. Seeing no other questions. Any final comments from our presenters? Yes.
So through the President, in response to the previous question, a replacement of Tudor Elementary would cost about $32 million. So roughly speaking, to do a, an intermediate or extended renewal on, would be approximately $20 million. Now, there, there are some caveats in there depending on major component systems that do need to be replaced at a time. And that, that will be found when we do the PAR and the project analysis report that will show us all the details required. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you very much.
Seeing no other questions. I thank you guys for your time. Director Bishop, any final comments?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so that brings us to item D. That's just right on time. I need a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of legal update and negotiation.
Madam President, I move we adjourn to executive session for the reasons you made.
Is there a second? Second, thank you. Moved in seconds, we are adjourned into executive session. It is five o'clock.